All the meetings are ordered. Uh, thank you everyone for being here. So I do roll call and my first time doing this particular roll call, so let me wrap this here. Welcome. Katie Avalox. Here. Karen Cronwell. Here Carla Bennington-Cropf. Here Danielle Bailey is here. Item one D, agenda of schedule. I need to approve the agenda. On my end. Third motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any objections? The agenda is approved. We'll move on to item two A, which is a time for public comments. Uh, time to speak on anything uh that is a non-agenda item. So if there are any public comments. No, okay. Alright, then we're gonna move on to our item three A, which is a celebration of this gentleman walking in.
Can I speak?
Oh. What?
I speak only.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
When Bobby called me that night. I said, what? Did a great job. I'm impressed with him. Thought his way through it.
Here's, wait, why don't you come, well, why don't you come up here? Why is the microphone so everyone can hear you and tell us who you are?
I am Dan Becker. I am safety director for the right by the sisters. And I've been working with this school district for almost twenty years. Agreed, just to get work with. And this young man here, Ariyan Wright, for doing a great job. The driver got sick. He realized something's wrong and we call it, our business is DLR, it doesn't look right. He saw it. Great job. So come here, give me a tip. And all children love anybody, right?
So we actually have several folks here tonight would like to recognize uh what you did. We have Mayor Kennedy. Would you like to come on?
And we also have several members of the common council as well as the city administrator. So would you guys wanna come up and join me?
Yeah.
If you speak loud enough.
My name is Brian Kennedy. I am the mayor of the city of Glendale. Uh, since Alderman Steve Schmowsling, he's the common council president. Alderman Joanne Shaw, who happens to be your alderwoman. So uh, uh, what a, and then uh, the city administrator Carl Warwick. Uh, we have put together a proclamation on behalf of the city that is signed by the mayor, the city administrator, and all six members of the common council. And um, the, whereas AC Holland III is an eighth grade student at Glen Hills Middle School in Glendale, Wisconsin. And whereas on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, AC Holland III was riding the bus after school. And whereas during the bus ride, the bus driver had a medical emergency, lost control of the vehicle, which caused the bus to be around coming traffic on a highly trafficked roadway. And whereas during the emergency event, AC took actions to take control of the bus. He hit the brakes, directed the bus into a safe space and called nine-one-one. And whereas because of AC's quick and heroic actions, he saved twenty children and their bus van. Now therefore being proclaimed that it is appropriate to honor AC Holland III for his heroic actions. And being further proclaimed by the mayor and common council that the city of Glendale has hereby recognized AC Holland III for taking lifesaving efforts while riding the bus.
Hey, AC, I think you probably need to keep coming up here.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna turn it over now to the police chief and fire chief.
Yeah.
I'm Captain Refugian. I'm here on behalf of Chief Mark Ferguson.
I'm Robert Walker, the fire chief.
We won't reiterate the, the whole story again, the whole of what occurred, but I will say we have a citizen marital word. To AC, this is for a member of good standing in the community on April twenty-fourth, one twenty-fourth, to play exemplary initiative. And moral character by rendering aid to another, taking decisive action for harm in others. Very well.
So I'm also representing today um for the, those of you that know the story and the incident that we're all talking about actually happened. Our borders and our communities actually happened in the city of Milwaukee. So uh, I reached out, talked to Fire Chief Lipsky from the Milwaukee Fire Department and asked he asked me to represent him here today. He could be here tonight. Uh, but we have the North Shore Fire Department, the Milwaukee Fire Department, the city of Glendale, everyone that has already acknowledged what you did when I heard about what happened. Uh, and the story of even what I heard tonight, you did an excellent job. And when you, when you see that and you knew what to do, you look out for it and you did the right thing. So if you wanna be a firefighter before red officer, so. I'll take care of you. Uh, but on behalf of the department, the Milwaukee Fire Department, congratulations and thank you. And give us a more certificate of challenge.
The state representative is also here.
I'm super glad to, I know a lot of folks have already have already said their due diligence. Uh, but I'm honored to have you in our district and really grateful for the work that you've done. Uh, this is a proclamation for the state. Uh, signed by, by me and the speaker of the house as well as other folks. Thank you again, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you do um in high school and even further.
AC, so everybody is here to honor you and the school board in our district also wants to honor you and say thank you. Um. I wanna say thank you for exemplifying what our community is about, which is caring for others and stepping up in moments that matter. I'm sure that when all of that happened, it was very scary and almost instinctual for you to, to engage in such a heroic act. But I, I actually think the most commendable thing that you did, and I think the board would agree, is that after everything, you could have tended to yourself and you could have, that would have been totally reasonable. But you looked to take care of others on the bus and you calmed others, told them they were safe, they're gonna call their parents. And I just think that really exemplifies what our district is about. And from the bottom of our heart, I wanna thank you for, we have, you can even have a ball. Well, we have a small token of uh appreciation as well for you. So I'm gonna present you with this uh certificate of appreciation and recognition of your heroism, quick thinking, responding to a school bus emergency, and preventing a potential disaster. We thank you for your leadership in handling the dangerous situation wisely and offering compassion and aid to other students on the bus. So it's really an honor to. That was exciting. And now on to the more less exciting, but very important things. Um. Let's get an agenda. Okay. You were just here for the exciting stuff. I'm not gonna upset you. Um, so we are going to move on to item four A, which is teaching and learning uh Glen Hills Math Course offerings.
We're, I'm here today, Jennifer Sticke, here today with two of our math teachers and coaches and administrators from Glen Hills Middle School. Um, we'd like to have a discussion around the capway of math instruction in our middle school going into Glendale. And so they've been doing a lot of research and some work behind the scenes. Um, and they'd like to share that information with the board, having, having a discussion, an initial discussion about the possible.
We're just losing the sound. I feel like you're not really back.
Yeah.
There we go. Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, real close.
This year, the math teachers and coaches have been working hard to meet our district five goals of a hundred percent of our students will meet proficiency on a grade level essential math standards. We believe by collectively working together, teachers, students, and parents, we will positively impact student outcomes. Currently, at each grade six, seven, eight, we have three grade level math classes and one accelerated class. The accelerated class is made up of students who have high test scores on star eighty-five percent or higher. Score high in their grade level class. Have guaranteed recommendations. And these are students who state themselves that they want to be in an accelerated class. So right now I'm going over what we currently have and then we'll go over what we're excited to talk. Sixth grade accelerated currently completes all of the sixth grade curriculum. And half of the seventh grade curriculum in one year. So it's very fast-paced. These students go on to seventh grade accelerated class. And there they complete the rest of the seventh grade curriculum and all of the eighth grade curriculum. Okay, then they are ready to start in those broad gas eight graders. Additionally, we have three to six students in each grade level who have been accelerated by fourth and one grade.
Alright, so uh, three years ago I got to become a math coach here in the district. Before that I was a fourth grade teacher for, um, I believe it was eight years. And um, one, it was very exciting to be able to get through the building and see all the math teachers, what's happening, all the math learning, what's happening. And then also to work with older students for the first time. So fourth grade, seventh, and eighth grade students. And so to see students that I had last seen in fourth grade, a couple of them I had seen in sixth grades. And to see how they had changed as learners. And so students that I had seen in fourth grade and thought, okay, they, is that what they get? They're gonna be on the next grade. Uh, halfway, the accelerated track. Um, some of them were. And they, um, some of them had seemed to have lost their belief in themselves. Some of them seem to uh not enjoy math anymore, which I really loved it when they were in my fourth grade classroom. Um, and their scores and what I, the first time I got to see scores across the building. And so I got to see um my fourth grade scores, their percentile before not to say, by the time they were eighth grade, they were actually um not even qualifying. If they had a, if you chose to have eighth graders, they wouldn't have qualified within the criteria. And so I was kind of surprised. It was a year after the pandemic. And so everything was just kind of crazy that year. And um, so then the second year, um, things settled down greatly. Um. And I'm still seeing the same kind of things. And so I'm thinking, well, it's in Europe. I mean, it takes a while to get over all of these things. The data is still looking the same. Our students who um at the end of fifth grade, just at, at that level dropped on average ten points, sometimes more. Um, by the time they got to eighth grade, the best percentile was like an average of eighty-five percentile to an average, sometimes seventy-five percentile. For some students that of course, or that some students higher than that. What we did notice though, um. You also noticed that students um in the general classrooms were also less engaged in um that is troubling too. Um. And it was frustrating to me to see two different um, that series of learning and that does not seem equitable. Um, and this year we got to think into a little bit deeper offense onto work with people. And so I had more time to do the work uh spread across the building. We got to dig into the need to support. And so things that were just noticing to report, we got to dig in enough to put numbers in. And so um, be able to chime together with my impressions, it's my impression of them to have a little bit of pressure and to have those conversations. And we're both kind of slow carefully here, so which is really nice. So, so I'll notice something, I'll talk with her and she'll have a similar noticing. We just sort of thin and So one of the things that we noticed that our accelerating students were dropping is middle school with their percentile. So we're our grade level shopping. And um, we know those, we wanted to see. And the uh, an unintended consequence that maybe people don't realize is that when we have this one section of often twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one students that are in the accelerated math class, we can't really disperse them throughout the schedule the rest of the day. They end up being kind of clumped together in other classes. People only have four sections. They can't really mix that up. And so we ended up with this kind of this segregation happening within the schedule that we just can't get around. And so um, we're necessarily seeing the benefit to the accelerated students that I would hope to see. Um, we're not seeing the engagement that we would like to see in our regular day classrooms, like general
So while we know this, this uh, we've really come in before and um we, this year as a school, we met um every week with each of the grade levels teachers. And we looked at our curriculum and we really spent some time analyzing the curriculum against the standards to make sure um, that wasn't the issue. And we spent um time every meeting with every um grade level teacher and planning out all the lessons together. By doing this, we were able to see if there were any gaps in the curriculum and we were able to fill in here and there if we did notice some gaps. Through collaboration with other grade levels, we were able to align what is taught at specific grades and communicate this to the teachers. Um, kind of grade level tests and rubrics were created using the curriculum as a guide. Teachers were able to document test results on a spreadsheet so that we could analyze and see if there were any students who needed um, a little bit of help by any of the standards and show that rate as the full small groups and the help of those students. So as we reflected on the table we shared with you. We were looking for ways to help us meet our goal of a hundred percent proficiency. We wondered if the place, pace of accelerating sixth graders was too fast, not giving them enough time to learn a concept deeply. We wondered if there was a way to help improve students' thoughts, feelings, and anxiety throughout math. Many times, Sean, I hear throughout the day from students, I'm not good at math. Or I could never be in any accelerated math courses. Or on the other end, when we're in the accelerated classes, uh, especially on the, near the test, we see students crying. Um, they're anxious that if they don't get a great out of test, they'll be moved out of the accelerated class. So we have reflected on the research also. We found that the research suggests all students perform better in diverse classrooms. Yet, as we reflected on all this, we do know that there are handful of students that do better than are moving to contact quickly and enjoying the challenging grades. So we had to love.
So again, Natalie and I sat and talked and those things over and reflected and came back and talked some more and put some ideas together. And um, spoke to you on what was, what's this proposal. We would really um like to make the accelerated access if we sprayed, yeah. Um, we would like to start by doing that next year, like making this experience. So accelerating math having all students go into the good. Um, we, again, we recognize um, we recognize that some students do benefit from that acceleration. And so um, we are still having that a little bit of the full grade level acceleration rather than accelerating. So what we're saying is um, as students move through sixth grade, it's essential year in those levels of population are all been trying to think about math. In elementary school, you're really not all the basics. And studying in sixth grade, you're putting notes together to make new concepts and work in different ways. And it's also our largest, which uh, it takes more days to get into the program for our nation here. So we really we wanna make sure we have a sixth grade teacher teaching that sixth grade curriculum. At the same time, our district went up really quickly. Um, we will be giving them uh, PHS. They start how they do all their PHS. Um, they'll finish up a couple of topics that they need to finish learning on and then they'll be able to kind of work on their related. Some pretty quicks that are related to next. Students who accelerate a full grade level by the end of sixth grade year, who is seventh grade math will be able to then to be pretty great level math. As seventh graders. This is not going to be third of students, but we currently have an accelerated math. Um, our students who test for the full grade level acceleration matter. As it says, it's the statistics for the sixth grade level. It's to be kids who are at the ninety-seven percentile. And what we noticed when we were looking at it is both students who are full grade level accelerated, they can verify um performance at just an average score. They team, they're basically kids. Who love the subject, who are loves learning, or are really, really motivated. Um, and so that makes sense, really. Um, so this, this is a change. It is a different change. Uh, but it is for the best to be part of all of this that's helping our accelerated students to work in an accelerated class. It's all those.
So to be ready for high school, um, we are not taking anything away from any students. Grade level students right now enter high school taking algebra one as freshmen. Students who have been accelerated in sixth and seventh grade are taking algebra one as eighth graders. And have the opportunity to take geometry or honors geometry. Uh, we also have a small group, our thing, who um is taking honors geometry as eighth graders and um a couple who will be taking honors algebra two as eighth graders. So we don't plan on taking anything always. So if our proposal is accepted, next year at this time, we will share the impact of this change with you. And we are very hopeful that um we will then be proposing to eliminate seventh grade accelerated math following. And we did include some additional information about sharing the context as well, that really dates into this as well. And that lays out on the possible math sequence. You know, it looks like a four, five, five school here to come on the first day of the play. Um, second page, twenty-five or twenty-six. Easy now that's a very accelerated, but I'm also looking at eighth grade a little differently. Uh, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven, looking at having that, you know, seventh grade math with the seventh grade standards and then the sixth grade. So looking at doing base and approach. Our first year, we just go on this is great accelerated and then dig into the data. So really a lot of our work is really digging into S P L Ts at every level data. This is the need was deep on. Really doing everything about our school within our students. So that's really been the focus and all this work. Supporting our students. Um, and then also a whole child of us that are as well and being able to have students that have a lot of conversations with a diverse population within your classroom. So when you start tracking students, they lose something. So that's another big piece of this. So we look at our being on a good basis. And with high school readiness, I mean, as you know, with high school, there's
I'm gonna guess that we have possibly a lot of questions or comments, but I wanna request it because this is a discussion and we will be asked to vote on this at our regularly board meeting in May. Okay. So yeah, we're just, we're just getting started. And thank you for bringing it. Excited. I can tell you guys who has a lot of thought about everything, thought into this. So I, I have a question, but I think some of them could be answered. Like, I, I would just like to have the answer eventually um around, like, okay. So, so, so I will, I will say them because I don't, yeah. Uh. I'm curious, it sounds like anecdotally you've decided that the accelerated model is what's correlated to like lack of enthusiasm or confidence in students. Um, and so I guess I'm curious for you to share the data, share the research. Uh. I don't know what the actual curriculum is that we use. I know there's lots of thoughts around it because of like Alex or Alex or something. And is that, that's part of our math supplemental? That's supplemental. Okay. So I would love to understand the So that's supplemental. Okay. So I would love to understand the actual curriculum, just what that is. Um, how long have we been using this, um, current accelerated model? Um, and like some of the data about like the data, because it sounds like you guys are pouring into it. So I would love to just see the numbers that you're pouring into. How long have we been doing it this way? Why were we looking at that way? I'm curious how, um, our management programming will, or, uh, separately against partner districts? So how are they doing it? I remember taking on working great, but it wasn't like accelerated. It was almost like an option. So I just know there I'm curious about the ways and why we want to move in this particular way. Um, and so, so, all right. I think that, oh, and you mentioned working with Nicolay. So I'm wondering if we'll be able to track or have data if we're going to make this change to follow our data, to follow kids, see how they're doing, like, are they performing better than at, at Nicolay or like, would we we always talk about sharing data, but, and so I'm just curious about. Okay, those are my, my questions, which I don't have the answers to right now, but I, I just thought I'd say thank you for, for bringing something. And then we'll go down online.
I have many questions here, but I don't necessarily need answers unless you want to talk to me. Um, I am also curious about evidence from Peter schools. Are, are they moving in the same direction? Um, doing away with accelerated classes or do they have accelerated classes?
So some of the students are like, do they have a great acceleration? How would we teach them on that? And who looks like just, you know, to help them teach. It's possible to, you know, in the science class, right? I'll be satisfied.
I see Taylor. They might teach multiple.
That's accelerated version that is the same as I said.
I appreciate your awareness of how segregation is happening with the accelerated classes, because that's been, I've observed that with my son and it's, it's been, he's noticed that he's always in the classroom with the same kids. And there are a number of kids he has not been able to share class space. But so I, I'm glad you're aware of that and of the equities around that. I I'm curious about seeing the data on loss of proficiency. What I hear you saying is that all students have gone down in test scores in the post-COVID era. Is, you said those in regular classes went down? And those in accelerated classes? Did I misunderstand that?
Um, so I started to go down, but it isn't necessary. I started working at it open and so this is what I noticed since when we went and started getting data from higher years, um, I can't, I think that is happening. So the data that I can look at, had the data of current students in the building and looking at, for the fact of the and so I can't go back to the student from twenty nineteen and look at their prior years of style, how like
So you've looked at like year over year, test over test data and observed a drop in test scores for kids who are in accelerated classes?
The kids are first, uh, first, they get, um, chosen to be in the accelerated track in based on every data, as English it's great and also based on their third grade year, that needs to be made to make to make. Um, just to get that consistent, our twenty twenty four data obviously isn't made, um, it's standard data for that, but that's the way.
Right. So each year you're testing them on their own grade level, same, so fifth grade is fifth grade of standards. Yeah. Okay. Got it. Um, I, I just wanted to just comment that the pre-test model is something I've always kind of struggled with. Um, again, it's, you know, my own anecdotal experience, but if you're pre-testing kids to see if they should accelerate and they're required to present skills in a specific way that you teach. They may understand a concept, but not understand the specific model with blocks or lines or whatever methodology is. What systems, or what's your approach to that? If you see a child who, I, I mean, we did this with Nick, right? He clearly knows materials, but knows it differently. What happens to that student? How do you manage that? In, in this model of human vision?
Testing is a lot of days, but, um, testing is good for all students so that the teacher will analyze, you know, um, when they're working through unit, then they know that's wrong. They are answering our request. They really know it and they'll, um, talk with them and, um, and try to see where they're at, you know, and then push them, keep on pushing them forward. And we'll have, if this goes through, we'll make, um, personal for that student to keep on going further into the seventh grade curriculum and keep on learning as far as they want to come to anything.
So this model would have the classroom teacher manage that with interventionist, like coaching, providing support? Or?
Whatever, based with.
Okay. So that, that brings to mind another question I had jotted down, which in this model you're envisioning like a sixth grade teacher has to know both the sixth and the second grade curriculum, right?
Yeah.
To be able to manage that acceleration and then if a sixth grader is learning the seventh grade curriculum, sort of independently, the teacher is going to be tracking different students working at different cases through the seventh grade curriculum?
The way we are right now, our sixth grade teachers also teach seventh grade, same grade section this year. Our seventh grade teachers also teach in eighth grade section this year. So it's that new learning, but that's learning that they they are relying on.
Just a different idea that they're going to track individuals as they differentiate into their, the space they need to be in. Okay. That's an interesting idea.
Which is nice, but our class kind of just think about that side, building in Christmas, some instructions as well, and then being able to speak at the statue.
Right, right. Okay. Um, the other thing that all this brings to mind for me is, um, like, how this, how this, um, works together with Parkway? Because we're hearing a lot about this at Glen Hills, but you know, a lot of your kids who need acceleration when they reach fourth grade probably should have already been getting it in some form at Parkway. Has there been a dialogue or any conversation or thinking around where Parkway fits into the story of differentiated need?
Yes, we did want to have this conversation first. We, we, our coaches are there. So we've been having some really good conversations that only of how context supports kids can you know, be better at all the shifts into the high, these stops, right? Now I really need to look at these sections, certainly looking at those pieces within the curriculum. So I know the bad coaches. I don't know if you want to say anything about some of the, the work that we just, that is a vertical team. Um, we have the sessions, so however it shifts the system or the system, it shifts, not just doing it this way. Okay. Everyone trained up to be in this network and that is a lot of support for you.
Okay. I, I'm fascinated by this idea, this model. So I, I'm still wrapping my head around it. So thank you for, for bringing it to us.
All right. You guys have a misfortune or problem with a portion of having a lot of accelerated math due to history sitting on this table. Yeah. Um, so one of the questions that I, um, have more immediately at the forefront is while I'm super excited with the idea of all the differentiation that puts a great deal of work in the lap of our instructors. So how are we supporting our teachers to ensure that they have what they need? I mean, I know you, you guys are fabulous resources as well, but I just want to make sure like we have this ideal. How do we make sure we're fulfilling the ideal in a meaningful way?
Well, then, that is the work that we will be doing, um, once this gets through. And so, and we've already done some of the work to start and, and anticipation, um, and also to look at its immediate personality remains sense. And so what we have done already is rely on our sixth grade standards with the, with the appropriate seventh grade standards and look at where and I'm pretty good on those things, just playing in the seventh grade. And then it's not that we'd be writing curriculum or that students have to be that we're pulling the seventh grade, we're getting these resources. We're putting together the videos ahead of time for students to be able to watch that as well. Um, and so we're laying out the map for students to follow as they go on, for teachers to be able to follow, to have resources there already. Because, like I said, that's, that's a lot to put on the teachers. Um, and so setting them for success.
We actually already are doing something similar to this in, um, the eighth grade math, um, grade level classroom. We have a couple of students who started to really excel with the eighth grade material. And I created, um, using all the algebra information, I created videos and a path for those students who thought they could get through the algebra curriculum along with the eighth grade. And we said, um, it started with that Alex, Alex was there for more. Uh, we said, you can work through it at your own pace, curriculum. So, um, I did the same thing last year. And, um, I did have students who completed everything, took the Nicolay exams and started, um, as in geometry this year. And we have, I believe, two, for sure, two eighth graders right now.
Um, I feel as though you guys had presented to us in the past a plan, a potential plan for the partner schools to kind of move toward algebra as the eighth grade curriculum, if I'm remembering that correctly.
They said, always going to talk about, but no one's, no one's.
There's been no movement in that direction.
Um, so it just certainly, that is the support, that's what we do a very slow roll out of this, the focus of the point at sixth grade, first thought, and really both seeing that and that's why we're particularly so we would do sixth grade and seventh graders all of the year, so each one and to support. So sort of, yeah, a slow roll of, it's, it's a slow roll. To provide that support, we would, we would be different.
Yeah, one last question and I don't expect you guys to be able to answer it, but it's something I think would be worth just considering globally, which is if we see that as cohort effect, so having these super accelerated students kind of move then as a block, where else would we be having this ripple effect in our, in our educational environment? Because not everybody is going to be equally talented in every subject, but I have to believe that perhaps we're seeing the effect in other arenas in our educational system as well. And I would just be interested then in perhaps figuring out how we could also understand the effect of the change. If that makes sense. So I'm not putting that in your lap, but I'm just curious, you know, about the big picture of our learners as well.
About, like, to know why they're having to separate the classes.
Right. So like, if we don't ever have the cohort and we have a more academically integrated environment, then how are we seeing the effect of that shift as well on our students? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then, we're, we're, we have the last slide, we're planning, um, if this goes through coming back in May of next year, say, here's all the data from this year, here's everything we noticed. Um, it would also be good to get survey of students out and a survey of students attitude and keep that way going. And so.
Like math attitude is a particular, for you, yes.
Right. And so we definitely, I'm actually pretty dependent, say, okay, do that here. Then we have my input and if we look at the impacts, we look at what needs to be tweaked, if it's working and what, what do we need to do now?
Okay, I'm sorry. I have one more question. Um, did, was there any kind of curriculum shift around the same time that you started looking at the data? Okay. So the curriculum has been stable. There hasn't been a shift with how we're teaching or how the kids are accessing information? Or how?
We, we went on block schedule, um, to give kids more, so the kids actually had more time in their math class as soon as happened. Um, and so that was an improvement, um, the same with our E L A schedule, our partner districts were, had more time for E L A and math learning than we did. And so we thought, well, that's, that's what's going on with their scores. When we get equal math time, it would be good. And then we were seeing what we wanted to see.
Thank you, guys. Okay. So the same time you guys, uh, started looking at the data is when Alex became all over, um, high students hated. And I, they feel like it doesn't back up because my students in particular, they are accelerated track, well, the high middle schoolers are two years ahead. Um, and that's because they finished Alex when they were in fifth and sixth grade. So they were teaching themselves stuff that was not backing up what they were learning in the classroom, but not reinforcing that. They actually told me they wish they hadn't worked that with what they learned in class because of it. So I'm wondering if that's a thing we're looking at as well, if Alex is going to continue or if we're hitting, okay.
Wait, wait, stand up, stand up, yeah, stand up.
In this past. Oh, and that's true.
Well, I think Sarah's, I'm grabbing it with me to Alex.
Cool.
Hey, that'll make a lot of people happy.
I'm writing it down.
Well, I feel like this is a valuable information to incorporate into this ask because part of understand, I mean, that's really important information, cool, because, and I was trying to get at that with my question of like the anti-total evidence of things just dropping based on the accelerated track alone doesn't quite seem like it would be a full story, right? So then you've got, you've got block scheduling, you've got Alex, 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 anyway. Uh, so I kind of like understanding that whole picture and how that may have impacted or is, is it interesting?
And we had a lot of discussions around whether or not to include that, including our data as well, and then we're not seeing change.
So, okay. That was really my only question, so it's happening in Dallas. So we're good. Chris?
First of all, I want to say thank you for, also, I thought it was so well done. So, um, a few questions. Um, I wonder if you had a chance to reach out to special ed department, to get to the talented department? And then of course other math teachers, and if you have a sense of what their feedback might be?
Um, I, I
And I'm sorry, if you, I have a good, okay. We did have some really good conversations about this. She also helped me accelerate, um, and teaching for kids that we don't go deep enough. We're just sitting in service. And then when it's our DVD assessments, they, they need to know it in a deeper, where they're not being successful, um, which then raises anxiety in students, um, and they're finding that their grade is accelerated, you know, going to an advanced grade level, where so we didn't have that learning, um, so more successful for students. So that's, that was the conversation that we had. Um, this would, we need the shift, would have to achieve our math acceleration policy. Um, so that, that would be a shift. So sometimes kids would just be put into that accelerated class versus if we keep the grades, some of these, right? We always want to have different pathways for students. They don't want to take anything away, right? Because one, because those are their students, so students need to grow. Um, so I feel a little bit, but
And I'm wondering, there was discussion of extra supports that, I mean, it sounds like you're accelerating the, right, the general math class, well, term. And if additional supports might be needed for kids who are struggling and if that's something you currently have to capacity for or you think that might have such implications or anything.
Probably a lot, but I don't know if you want to talk about resource at all, without, you know, the license of the resource, time to be teaching students, it's learning, personal, so it's getting to one.
So we're looking at, um, accelerated students in general, it's much smaller, person, proportion of our population, I think, that we have. Like, we, very students, what age is going to accelerate in that? Looking eventually, if, if our goal was to get to the eighth grade algebra, we would have been looking at, um, when you finish teaching one standard and you move on to the next grade level standard, there's some redundancy that comes out with that. And so you, you don't have to do, um, there, but then you have to, 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 you have to. So we're looking at, at the same time, we're also looking at our essential standards, our entire standards, our essential standards are pretty, more standard per grade level that we absolutely feel we must have students proficient on for them to be able to go forward successfully at the next grade level. We also have priority standards, which are also important standards, but aren't quite to the same level as the essential standards. But they are standards that we want to get, we want, you're reporting out on, on, on the report card. And then we have other standards which are And then we have other standards, which are, you know, standards all over the place. And it would be nice to have every teacher proficient in every student standard at the same time. Um. It needs to be able to move students forward. So we pick our, our standards, we pick our priority standards. Those are what we work on while we're at, when we head forward. Then we speak a little about standards and because you can do like a mini unit on those, so that each one's willing to get to that information. But it's not stuff that we're just speaking about. At the end of the year, when you finish up, you know, you finish up what you're bringing up, but you still have partially to do that. Just be some of that in there. And so we're still getting them in, but deficiencies would be moving ahead until the next standard. And also, for this kind of.
Thank you. I hope I didn't put you on the spot. Any comments or questions? If you are. Hopefully, audience. All right. Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. Yeah, thanks, guys. I believe Jennifer people stay there and talk to us. And allow, please, and leave. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
And I didn't even worry about your.
Second, what to say. Oh, I'm just trying to say.
Yeah. We talked about PD days. And I love the look that we can do for the. Um, so I'm just, I'm not going to read through everything, but it's just really all this, this work that was done around this. But I'm going to get into straight A team. Also, associations. Share this with them. And that lets me go forward with it. We also have discussions on the industry team, like I said. Staff surveys were put into this.
That's what I think. Yeah. Yeah, you gotta. You have to do rock star stuff, right? All right. So based on the surveys in August, we did another survey recently with their staff. On their August PD days, how they like that look. We do surveys all the time, you know, reflecting on PD days and what those look like. So overall, looking at this new calendar or proposal for the 2425 school year, we are looking at changing some of our PD days. We have 10 PD days this school year. And we're looking at moving that to four PD days. And then also our staff record days for those 10 PD days. We'll be shifting those into conferences, so families don't have like a happy day of school. The trouble with in here and all of that. So we'll be moving rather to those conferences. So staff will still have that. Days. And then we're also going to continue to do, utilize some of these days for that differentiated PD. So you're going to have to look at some of that feedback, we'd allow positive feedback around the differentiated days. This also gives us an opportunity to meet as a district multiple times throughout the school years. We can have everyone together in the same place and really continue that goal to, we will be in the same direction with all staff. And then also the calendar format was adjusted as well, looking to provide additional clarity. I will mention some additional feedbacks recently came to light for K4 students because they were less musters. And then they also have different conference days, creating just a K4 calendar for families. Because it's very confusing looking at this calendar and then trying to get the K4 information in there. So just adding a separate K4 calendar, like when they have dates of when it's their record PD, because it's very different than the rest of the district. So that would be an addition that I'd like to bring back in that sense, K4 calendar. We don't need. Or do you want to do the PD several?
Sure. Um, yeah. It's great. I'm sorry.
I know.
But we thought it would be really important to highlight the structure of how we're professional development. So like we would organize this year. We had three different types of professional development days. Some of those will be called differentiated PD days. And some of those being building days. Okay. And you can see an outline of those different structures here. But essentially, we try to use those differentiated shapes. We would offer maybe better, pretty rotating sections on those days. And they were really designed to meet the varying needs of the different staff positions throughout our experience. You know, being on the interview circle to learn about different strategies, supports, resources. They didn't, they kind of need to know, but they just need a quick 45 minute session to learn to do it. And I would say one of the biggest celebrations that I would like to say is that we need the, I basically group to both groups of lots of people, knowing that we have lots of experts within our field district. And our first call for presenters on the day was more like tapping presenters. So it's, I was using to do this. And as we got chugging along this school year, people were more willing to build their gathering room. And step up as leaders, share their expertise and knowledge with others across the district. And that feels amazing to me because it really, I think, gives a nod to the experts we do have. It helps, yes, amazing engineers in that school district. So we're really grateful for that. And our building PD days, we try to make sure we align those with time, like administrative, we try to be tight for, for our teachers. So we try to align those with report card time, progress report time, knowing that that feel like a big fit for our teachers. And making sure they have some dedicated kind of built in those, those P days to get that. And then that also gave an opportunity for the buildings to really focus on maybe putting that value. So that felt good. Another highlight is that our parent professionals were, apart of almost all of our P days, they would come for two hours of every professional development day. And anything else I wanted to say? For the most part, I would be saying, you know, the professional development feedback we received from staff this school year was, was very positive. Um, you know, in public education, professional development is, it never means, right? It's never perfect because there are so many different, they staff members. But I would say it felt like we are at a comfort point where we can recognize that there are varying needs. And put some different structures in place, more back.
I think people were so honest with the feedback, but it was, it made a quick adjustment, right? So we needed something to switch for the next PD day, we were able to do that. We need to pull something else in to meet a need, then we were able to do that. So that is really helpful. I'm having, it's kind of dispersed over the school year, so it would be quick changes that helps support it.
I would say one other thing I wanted to highlight is that every professional development day, we started here. Building fires, mother's spirit started here together as one. And that, the, and that to kind of really build that to us about getting positive. It's very hard, a, hard that one built for the rest of the district. And it was really nice to bring people together in one, one place and go on.
Question.
I, I just want to say, um, thank you for sharing the PD data, like the feedback data. It's just great to see, just to be able to eyeball it and see the different kinds of feedback we got. So I really appreciate that, that transparency. Um, I love using in-house expertise. Thank you for enabling that. And I love what it allows in terms of follow-up. Because often when you bring in outside experts, you're sitting in a classroom or somewhere and just scratching your head. You have a follow-up question being to just send a note to your colleague down the hall. It's just a, it just creates a lot of efficacy and strength of learning. So just smile. Thank you for, for shouting that out.
I would just add my thanks for being really responsive to some of the feedback. I think making that change from 10 PD days to four is a really powerful sense of being heard for the community and understanding like the impact on our families. We want to enrich our staff, we want to make a meaningful experience, it's really important. And also, we need to recognize that community is all those different moving parts. So I appreciate that you guys really worked hard because I am confident that condensing all of that information, that was really key over those 10 days into what will be much smaller timeframe, it's going to be a challenge. So thank you for that.
So that, that means some of my questions are just thinking because when you both attended before, you outlined the building days first differentiated. So now you have four, so do you have an idea of how you're like, how you're going to separate the building first differentiated? About parents? Uh, we have an overall sketch of the leadership team about what that would look like. But I want to do anything for still, so that people have the calendar. And so you can then fill in all the areas.
Okay.
Absolutely. That helps to cover some problems that are. One thing Jennifer and I actually briefly talked about was this idea, I think you mentioned stacking? And like, how are we going, how are you going to build upon the things that you're learning? Instead of having like, you know, a one and done, learn this this day or later maybe. So I'm curious to hear like, how, what's changing or how you're thinking about that for this.
What do we think, what do we think about the stacking? We'll have to decide whether or not that may be like after school type thing? That we do once a month with our staff or whether it's all embedded in the PD? So we need to take this back depending on whether those kind of P days are going to look like. Yeah. And then where, where does that stacking, you know, look like? I can see it happening on those P days, but we haven't had that conversation yet. I anticipate.
Okay, okay. Um, and then my other question is around, um, how will we measure or how do you measure the impact of the PD days? Uh, like teacher efficacy, teacher learning and student learning? So how are we, how will we know the impact of the PD? Like how that is getting us to meet our goals, you know, for our student learners and that?
We did, in, in a couple of those surveys, there, there was a question around how is this, you know, okay, to your professional, you know, learning within your classroom? So I could pull that data. I think for you, then we can do that a lot of time this school year as well for staff. So I can pull that out.
Or start, like as you know, like there's gonna, I just feel like it would be good to have data to associate with this. So we're hoping for P D days, the beginning of the year, like if we're, that's one of those questions. It's like, because the feedback is really great, but like, it's also a ton of cool forms to like comb through. And I, I would love to see like themes or like we can say, teachers feel like we're approving or it's impacting my classroom teaching, so something a little bit more stand.
We do, we, there are a couple of those questions. So we have to be, we have one more to that.
Okay.
We can lay that out for you.
Okay. Otherwise, I love those. Thank you. Calendar format, love it. Um, okay, I'll just make a quick, then I do love, it's just a much more readable calendar than what we've been looking at the last few years. Just everything makes sense. There's no like, well, this shade of gray means this and check marks, like this is my. Right, yeah, like no, like little tiny letters and there's a plus and like this is, thank you. Okay. And now we can move on to 4C, which is data reporting, also surveys. This is about how I would help you get it, but, oh, there's, you know, like to the, I see. Okay, right. And this is just for discussion, but this is just a, a background for everybody as we talked about when and how often should we be surveying our students, our families, teachers? Um, I asked, and I think the, the orb wanted just to understand how are we already gathering data? How are we already surveying students, family caregivers? And like, what would the administration recommend around cycles of surveying families and caregivers and community, et cetera? And then learning about the student part of it as well? So thanks for bringing that for us.
So. It's a correct, so, yeah, our thinking, yes. I have a very strong, the university team is thinking about, um, going to see on there. Well, we currently have been reporting notes to the board on, we do a lot more. Thank you, Ben, also, this is, this is what we're doing. Right? Surveying their classrooms and even so about that. But we also, we have this meeting around what are some additional pieces? I'd like to share how we did before and where it kind of makes sense in the school year for us. Um, some of these things are a little drafty and stacked up. Forward testing is listed in November, but we may not get the data until we begin in November. So I think when we think about this, we want to be able, this is going to work. Draft, we have to kind of adjust because of needed based on, on the data. So again, you can see in the older ones, there are a lot of the academic, the gross screeners are already doing things. So you, uh, third column data order, March 24th, 25th draft. Those are, again, the transfer of things that we are already to the square of school year. None of the ones that are not full or are things that we'd like to add. And a lot of those are consistent basis, we'd like to pay for each state of that on a monthly basis. Just the $80 and more, there's still what's happening in the buildings and in the districts. And then also we're starting to work on this resource, right? So we want to make sure that everyone has, we're all familiar with this work. And that's going to have some support, bringing that to that work. And just adding a goal, which you know, what we have to do.
And if I might add too, we also talk to the leadership team about, you know, for, 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 for data forward. It's impossible in a sense, for moving forward, but also our staff. And so it's part of the professional development, really being a service for, about being that data in front of the people who, um, who have those kiddos that the data is locked in, in their dormitory every single day. And, um, with that, if they're like that data, um, I think we'll be very, very supportive of that. Those are the type of, um, help support to really identify. Uh, so, yeah, but it's just our planning and all of that, right?
And some of this would be through education. A lot of those are national data, so they wouldn't necessarily, just sitting, sitting here looking at this list. Can I just, please? It's like a, there's a lot of information to move forward. And I love the idea of focusing attention on student achievement and outcome at every board meeting. Like making sure we have space for that. But also it's a lot, and so a dashboard model would be a fantastic way to deliver the same information for the community and teachers without having to, like, have it be a Q and A drilling.
We can send agenda for probably see a lot of.
Right, risk and habit. But, but I love the idea of like a, a dashboard that we can access.
Yeah. But of course, it'd be great. We're just setting up the time.
I hate to think that, like, you spending like inordinate amounts of time for the parents to come here to present to us if this information can all access and then people can read the questions as they arise. I don't want it to become a burden something. Right. But I also love the idea of access.
Yeah. And, and you can explain to like district damage board on there. So, you know, necessarily, you know, student data, you know, for all. Right. So we learn how to do all, you know, which is good. I want.
Yeah. I have a question. Um, so the caregiver and staff and student satisfaction survey results have their months. But would the recommendation be to do those annually? Or is it going to do them every two years, three, like to have, are you still working on that? I think we're still working on that. And the problem is, we love data, we love the data, it helps us, right? But we also know that right now we've got like things to figure out, get away from the very purposes. So I think the leadership team can go identify what, what in twenty five, that we don't right now do support. So, right, right. Yeah. So, um, that, we talked about that. Um, what is the, when you think about like edge of primary, we've talked about the dashboard or strategic planning and stuff? Like what is a reasonable, when do you envision that actually existing as a tangible item? And I won't hold you to it, I'm just curious. I suggest.
I suggest, I think that we would love to have our dashboard of sorts and the, as we launch the fall, right? Because we're saying we want this event in front of the board and we think the board needs it, or say, as you said, right? Um, and I, I think that we can just give the whole surface up. If we didn't go to the dashboard and the ball, it's a way to be perfect. You probably had. Um, but if we were to get a kind of put one point in front of the other, it's a word. Yeah, like the data test.
Okay. Anybody else have a question down there?
I have just one suggestion, um, about considering adding the meeting ready, the screener that Act 20 is going to come out by.
Oh, yeah. That is our open person. We don't, that has been pulled out. Yeah, right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to item five A, the right wing contract. Uh. All right. So we talked about last year going, potentially going to RFP for transportation. Um, then there was a conversation with N A T C and all the various superintendents. And the charge that they gave to business managers was to determine whether or not we should go to RFP or we can negotiate with Brightway and end up in a better space because there are a lot of risks to going to RFP for transportation, um, costs being one of them. Drivers shortages being one of them. We've seen a lot of districts struggling with transportation. So they did work from fall until about January, um, working with Brightway. And then we got an email that was sent at the end of January, which I included in the exact summary, which I know I shared with you guys when that came through in January. Um, just with their determination and that, um, their decision was to, that the best approach would be to continue to try to negotiate a contract with Brightway. So that's the email that's attached there and they kind of outlined all of their steps, um, not all of their steps, but some of the major steps and dates and pieces that they worked together as a team to come to that conclusion. After, um, that piece was decided, then they started working on, um, the contract, got to a space where they sent the contract to legal. Um, sent it to every area schoolwork so that you guys could all review it. And then they created an F A Q doc. So they asked each district to then ask the board, what questions do you have? Who found those all into one space, uh, worked together as a team on that, got all the answers to the F A Q. So it's been quite a process. And now we're in the space where we've got a finalized contract. Um, that's been reviewed by legal and it's currently been approved by Mayville, Indian Hill and Fox Point Bayside. There is literally a process where they are walking, driving it over to the next district after it's more approved so that there's one contract signed by each district. So maybe though, Indian Hill, Fox Point Bayside, I had to stop at Minnolay sometime each, or our May 15th meeting because we would be next and then last would be in the way for it on the 20th. Um, so the hope is that all districts would have signed contracts by the end of the venue. So this is just again, giving you the information again. Um, if there's any additional questions, I've been kind of fielding some as they come in and just shoot them over to the N A T C and sending them back. What we've obviously got tonight, we got a couple of weeks of there additional questions and anybody has, I can obviously get the answers to those before we bring them back in the team. And I don't know, I've had Gus reviewing it as well. Obviously, so typically the overhead department just kind of ended up with me.
Just a couple of points as I reviewed this, uh, of things that I see are, are positive based on my experience of having negotiated bus contracts for many years. One, one point is just a point of clarification. Uh, it talks there that this is a five year contract. I would tell you that having talked to bus contractors and also talking to bank officials. Banks like five year contracts for buses. Or the fact of having to loan money to bus companies, buses right now are running anywhere, just a regular 66 passenger running anywhere between 110, 20,000 a piece. Uh, so because of the, of the cost of the bus. That's what, that's what the financial people are looking for. So when you see the fact that's looking at a five year, that's the, the main rationale behind the five year. Which allows the bus company to continue to upgrade their fleet so that the district is not caught with a bunch of old buses that will they have issued with breaking down and things like that. So just so, that's just a point of information, just so you're aware, it's why it's five year.
Is it five or is it three with the option of the one year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just like the option there.
Okay.
Other things that I like in this contract, but the fact that here at least these first couple of years, you're held to, uh, CPI and not CPI plus, uh, that is a, that's a significant, uh, session by the bus company, uh, to hold the CPI. Uh, that is certainly nice. I, uh, I found very interesting. The first contract I've seen, I found very interesting about the damages. Uh, the bus company would provide for issue with service, things like that on that, uh, very interesting. The pricing and stuff I saw, I think it's fuel, you know, the schools are responsible for the directly buying, directly fuel that is. My experience, that's been good. I've known some bus companies with the, they made their transportation costs low, but they would add, add fuel as a wage to be to give profit when they wanted. So it'll be going in this way. It's good. So there's another thing I think the other thing that I liked was the fact, I don't know how successful it would be, but there is this, obviously this discussion about the, uh, Aspen's transportation and the viewing. I would only, don't get too excited about it. I would only tell you that my experience every time, a couple of these have transportation things. Once there is declared hazardous, it's very difficult for the sheriff's department to undeclare hazardous unless there had been significant, very significant changes in looking like those. So I mean, I don't want you to, it, it's good because it will get put in the book there. But I don't want anyone to get their hopes up that that's something that is good dramatically change regards to the hazardous transportation. So I would just leave those comments. I think maybe I was always my career and I think it's a.
Sorry. That's Todd. Todd, do you want to speak? Otherwise I'm going to mute you.
Okay. No, I just, uh, I, I don't know if you're, you know, at the budget, uh, section yet, but basically those are, um, you know, they're budgets, they're estimates, they're, they're better estimates than what you had at the beginning of the year.
Thank you so much, but we're not quite there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
We're at the transportation chat contract.
Oh, okay.
Hold on. I was so close. Okay. Karen, I don't remember who the question was to everybody.
I think it was, I had, right. I had just asked with the 220 budget. It's a pretty solid jump, but I don't believe we participate in 220 any longer. So that would be based on the district alone, right? It would not be a shared cost or somehow smooth.
Yeah. So that was mid the label 220 rate for buses. Oh, so I mean, you're talking about appendix A. I thought that was for, so I, okay, but this is, this applies to all. Yeah. Um, Karen, just so I was checking.
Sure.
Okay, but those are our. Okay. Questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. And now we can move on to the budget update.
Okay, yeah.
He's dealing with 23, 24, and I'm going to be talking about 24, 25.
Okay.
What are the years?
Great.
Philosophical.
Todd.
Okay. So the, the documents you have are the restated 23, 24 budget based, a lot, a lot of it is based on uh, actual known costs, but some of it is, uh, forecast through the end of the year. A, a, as best as we could tell. I think we're pretty close, um, in some areas, but others, you know, we'll have to see. You also notice that, um, I've included the, the potential loan in there of six million, which gives it a positive fund balance. Which I guess is a good thing. Um, it, it certainly looks better than it would have otherwise, but, um, that's, that's the budget. That's the estimated revenues and costs through the end of the year. And then the other document is the, the budget adjustments, um, in order to, I guess, accept that budget, you'd have to, um, uh, uh, adopt adjustments from what you approved back in October. Will this be, will these be the end of the adjustments? No, certainly not. Uh, there'll be more, more adjustments coming, but, um, I think this gets us in a little bit more realistic picture of where the budget is or where it should be. We're still looking at a budget, uh, potential budget deficit, but again, with the, uh, the borrowing, it, it certainly helps uh, paint a different picture.
Todd, I put these on here for action. Do they need to approve those?
Um, I, I don't know if, if, if those need to be approved tonight or not. I would think you'd want to approve them sometime before you approve the borrowing or you could approve them on the night you are doing the borrowing, but, um, I'm, I'm not, you know, sometimes those are approved at the very end of the year. Sometimes they're approved at different points of the year. Sometimes not even until after the end of the year, when you, when you have all your known costs, but I just thought it might be a good idea to uh, approve those as, as soon as you can. So you have a little bit better picture of where you're at or, or if people are wondering where uh, costs and revenues are at. At least you're going to have a much better, um, a, a, a much better document you can show them. Back in, when you approved October, um, Fund 27 was not even included, um, in the budget document. Um, so that, that alone would be probably a good reason just to adopt this new budget and not adopt these changes.
I remember Barrett saying we should approve the amended. I think Barrett at the last meeting said we should, we should get this amended revised budget and notice out to support the, uh, loan documents. So, so I think that's, that's why this is on the agenda today.
Right. And I was going to say, this doesn't lock you into anything. You know, as you know, a budget is basically the best estimate uh, of annual revenues and costs. And that's what this is at this point. Like I said, there'll be changes coming over the next couple of months as well. But it, it does, it, it does put you in a better position of having a more realistic budget.
Todd, this is Carla. Can you hear me?
Sure. Yep.
I, I'm curious about the, the reasons for the changes, the revised numbers. Um, I, I don't know if tonight is the time to go through that, but I'd like to understand why and how some of these numbers changed that are in the published document. So in, in the publication, so you know, places where revenue is significantly under what we anticipated, I, I would like to be walked through.
Sure. Yep. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it was just basically, uh, yeah, the, the big area that's the, of the primary concern is the Fund 27. That's your lar, second largest, uh, operating budget and it was not included. And then was also not included were the transfers from Fund 10 to Fund 27. So that's, there's some big missing pieces right there.
Right. And I see in the community service fund, for instance, revenues were adjusted down by what? Over 900,000.
Well, I think what happened there.
Part of that was changed in the P D, but that doesn't explain all of it. There's several hundred thousand I still don't, I don't know why or how.
Yeah. I mean, for Fund 80, um, it was, or it, the, the, the budget, you, you asked for a lot more revenue than you needed. Uh, apparently there was some plans to maybe do some capital improvements. I'm not sure. I, I don't know if anyone else is sure, but in any event, that's why Fund 80 looks so, so off.
Right. So at some point, I, I would like a little more detail to understand why it's so off, right? Why were, for instance, specifically 938,000 under on revenue from what was anticipated. And I understand there's complication with trying to rebuild these records. But, uh, and I know the community, I will hear from a number of people who would really like to understand this in a little more detail.
Well, I could, uh, the, the, the Fund 80 is, is real. I mean, the, the actual expenditures for this year are pretty close to historical amounts. Um, they're not that much different than, than most prior year accounts. Some were a little less, some were a little more. It's the revenues that are off on that one, that were very much over budgeted for, um, and over taxed for. That's where your big issue was.
At some point, I want to know the more specifics on that. How much does that change in the levy amount? If we're still under by several hundred thousand, if I remember my numbers correctly. Where was, where was revenue over anticipated in the budget that the prior manager built, for instance?
Yeah, yeah. We can, we can certainly try to dig, dig more deeply into that, but the only thing I, I can, I, I, again, I'm having to assume that there were some big expenditures planned for Fund 80 that never materialized, whether they were capital needs or whatever. I, I just, like, like I said, there's very few records or support documentation for why some of those amounts were um, uh, budgeted at that level. But that's, that's what it looks like to me.
Okay. Maybe, maybe I'll follow up with you separately when I have.
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Good.
To answer your question though, Todd, with regards to Fund 80, that the levy occurred around the same time that we were having big conversations around huge building improvement needs. And so we were anticipating with the building that we own, probably needing to start looking at over time, what those types of improvements needed to be. So that was the thought process at the point of the tax levy for Fund 80 because of deferred, because of deferred.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm assuming those were for the, for, for your building you're not using because you probably could not use Fund 80 capital expenditures for existing buildings unless they were specifically for community use or, or I should say significantly for community use.
You're correct. It was, it was a good build, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I would just echo Carlos' curiosities. Um, and curiosity doesn't feel quite as heavy a word, but it's just really hard to wrap our minds around the fact that there could be such a profound shift in the anticipated appropriate number and the actual appropriate number or the closer appropriate number. And I think we just are trying to wrap our minds around how what feels like errors in calculation occurred or what it is that exists in expenditures or doesn't exist in revenues, um, that we're in. I think we just want a more detailed dive at some point, like a little tutorial.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And again, you know, some of my numbers are simply estimates based on what we know this year, what's happened this year. And, and there might be some clearer pictures of those in another four to six weeks, um, as we, as we close out the year, but in general, um, I'm not seeing unless there's some big surprise expense for Fund 80 that no one is aware of. Um, I, I think those numbers are probably going to stand as is. And, and the, the, again, the only reason I can see for, for boosting that tax levy up was to do some very significant, uh, capital improvements. There, there'd be no other reason because you have no other, uh, community programs, uh, separate community programs that would require that amount of funding that isn't already, wasn't already covered in the budget.
Yeah, but I just want, I'm sorry, I want to clarify what I asked is. So I'm going to be. Notice of change in adopted budget, and I'm looking at the pre-lim twenty. The, the difference in projected revenue is reflected in the interest. Correct, like of any place. So. The original projection for local sources, source two hundred. Was there two million, seven hundred and sixty something. The revised is about half a billion plus. So that's, that's, that's half a million of revenue that was. Predicted, but not received. And you find another big one under instruction, two hundred and forty five. I do believe if you go back to the. Budget walkthrough of overspending that we asked, uh, Ms. Johnson to give, but I don't wish that could hear for that. She outlines something like two hundred and forty five thousand. Eighty for thousands or, or market value, which is something like that. So I think. That there is a way to walk through. These and, and put them, you know, sort of make sense of them. That service fund, that fifty chaos, that's not, that doesn't seem as huge. And then Todd, he's coming back to fund eighty, because that's a billion dollars of projected revenue.
Right, not expenditures.
Right, revenue. And he did say that that was a, that wasn't just a bad. I mean, I heard it saying earlier, just now, uh, that there was revenue projected that we didn't get. So, I mean, I don't. I was gonna know that insert because he wasn't in. The mind, you know, but, but I do think that. There is a way to sort of walk through it to try to understand, and then, and we could, you got more into that, but. My understanding of the question.
Yeah, so you're having to go through. Lindsey's prior memories, assuming they're accurate.
I think some of it will be there. Some of it will be there, but the other piece of it, I actually don't understand. It's how we get a DPI published budget summary that doesn't include. Fund twenty seven. Because isn't that like part of their required, is that not required on the DPI four? Todd, that's my question.
Well, I, I don't know what, I don't know what she reported the DPI, but on your website. The, the budget that you used for. Approval. The one on your website, that is, that I am not seeing a fund twenty seven in there. If that wasn't. If, if that wasn't the correct document used for. Bud- budget publication, I don't know why it would be on. It shouldn't be on your website. That's the only document I've been able to find that, that has, has some. Authoritative value to it that was used for budget purposes.
That's, you know, I'm just.
I mean, no, there, there's a, there's a form of one twenty seven specialized fundees. It's vital funds required. So why?
If it's presented to the board without it, how does that happen?
That's. Well, that comes straight from the, from the business office.
But if, I don't know which document. I don't know which document Todd's looking at, but I know by the time we got to. November with the final budget, the sped numbers are there. Which is why there was such a massive change in what we represented between June and October.
Okay, well, that's just a wonder. Because, um, so we, if they're, so the motion would be.
The one on the next.
I, we'll, we'll dive in another time, but that's just, I just. Trying to put those two things, trying to understand them. Um, but the reason we need to motion, or we need to vote out these to support our. Uh, our loan request, right? And these are sort of living documents that can be amended and revised as we learn more information. So I think. The, the, the actions discussion. I thought Allison went over. It's noticed for actions. I also do revise budgets sometimes. Yeah, yeah, it's okay, we can do that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the revised budget summary. And notice of change in adopted budget for twenty three, twenty four. Okay, so there's a vote, there's a motion in a second to approve the revised budget summary. And notice of change in adopted budget for twenty three, twenty four. I'll do a roll call, but just official. Carla, one, two, cross. Hi. Carla.
Hi, Katie Adams.
Hi, Chris Robinson.
I'm Danielle Bailey votes aye.
Danielle.
Oh, and, um, oh, I'm so sorry, uh, I missed visitor participation, yeah.
Should have been twenty two, twenty six, closer. Did you ask questions before you wrote it?
I, I did, I did not, I forgot, but I, I will ask if you have comments or questions, yeah. Because we could always, we can always fix that if there's, if you change our minds, I mean.
You'd Robert, yeah, right.
Apologies. And this room is like, I'm feeling a little bit disoriented.
Still need all those questions.
Sure.
And content, a couple concerns too. Thank you for raising the fund eighty question because. I looked at the numbers this afternoon, it jumped out at me like. It's really sad to come from in revenue. And I'm questioning, how can you budget something if you don't have the funding? You never wanted to have the approval money, you didn't have a rough revenue money, so why would you budget? For that in capital improvements in funding?
So what was in capital improvements, they were, that was, it was. Under completely, sure. As I was achieving, we were asked. To approve it and we, we questioned it heavily. The why, and the why was years of deferred maintenance. Meant that, and a couple bigger unexpected expenses that had occurred and possibly may have come out of our. Fund ten. Fund ten to fix like a, some bigger things. Uh, meant that to be sort of responsible, uh, and within the. We also had the power sort of not to change our bill rate, like, yeah, so much by, by. Putting that money there that we were actually sort of safeguarding if we would be able to put maintenance into that building than it needed. It wasn't about capital improvements of that building. And we have reports from the facilities team that show. The amount of money that that building would, I think it was something like six million. So, uh, uh, over time, over the next two, three, three years, and then up to ten, ten years, something like that. So it was a large number. And so the. The reasoning and, um, was sort of around preparing us for that.
So. A billion seven. Where does that come from?
Hold on. We, so I. A million seven.
Million seven.
So I want to know exactly how we achieved that number, because it was, do you all remember this discussion? The ask was for, I think, a two point three million dollar fund eighty levy. With the fund ten levy. The idea behind that number, as I understood it, very similar to Danielle, was that we had about six million dollars. In maintenance costs, not improvements. To Good Hope, and that about two million a year in levies would smooth the curve. On those essential costs that we had to incur. To keep the Good Hope facility. Um, capable, capable. Uh, and then there was a lengthy discussion. Among board members about whether that was an appropriate levy. And then as that discussion was occurring. Allison and the business manager said that they had discovered that we could increase our fund ten levy. By something over five hundred thousand. A compromise was reached in the board to. Impose the. Same total levy. Right, fund ten plus fund eighty, the same total number that was brought to us. Increase the fund ten levy. To the maximum amount. Decrease the fund eighty levy by the same amount. That's how you get to one point seven and change. So that the total levy ask that came from administration was the same, just shifted some of it over to fund ten.
But that didn't happen, so then why carry those numbers?
What do you mean?
It did happen, that levy occurred.
Yeah.
It did happen.
Yes.
There's, I don't know the. I don't know the exact levy, but as, but as I've been looking at twenty four, twenty five, and looking at levies, trying to see where we would be going there, there is a large, well over a million dollar levy in fund eight.
Yeah.
That had been assessed. On the separate tax.
Yes.
And then, and then it changed over the five hundred. Forty six.
I, I don't, I don't know all the details of that. All I know is that there is a large. Was a large fund eighty. Tax levy made.
What do you mean of five eighties?
Well, the old levy, I spotted that.
Oh, oh, thirty four.
He was loving, right, on the last one.
Right, according to the knowledge. Okay. Yeah, so it wasn't certified, it was.
So those improvements are happening now.
No, so it was. It was for deferred maintenance, so not.
Maintenance is happening now.
Well, I don't believe that. I, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
The money in the budget now for that.
No, you cannot, cannot spend that money. On anything else but maintenance of that.
Okay, so maintenance happening.
No.
Okay. That's my question.
Um. And also, at this point.
Just another note that I hope, I hope you know this, but you know, all leases that go up, they're not being renewed.
You do know that, it's not, oh.
Because I told the business office at my left, they were expiring the year I left.
What, you remember that?
Twenty two, twenty two. And just talking to you, old Peters.
So there, I. Well, I have to. So part of those, yeah, the issue is, you guys can have all that information, which you can tell. We just suffered that as we pulled up the single, so that's the words. So they found some sheets or. You, you told Ms. Johnson that though?
Uh, yes, she had all.
Anyone else?
I gave her, have I?
Joseph's Johnson.
Yes, she had all the leases and she should have, the leases should be in the business office.
Business office, okay.
But they all, I believe they were expiring in twenty zero.
So that must be.
Is the last year.
And, okay, but just the comment that said.
You guys, you can appreciate what you're coming to do, and it's not easy, but you have to live these numbers right now. And maybe you're comfortable. Because, you know, I'm surprised there aren't more people here because it's a committee meeting, but. When you get to this, now you've borrowed six million dollars.
Right.
Well, it's in the budget here. It's in the budget that you're gonna borrow six million dollars, so. That's a big number again, as someone said the last board meeting, that's a third year budget. That should probably, just to help and. Lots of point makers, not big players, but. Board right now, I believe you can just. Diving in and taking this apart and. Gus and, uh, they have a huge job and, and it's not easy, so. That's my advice, you know, but the other thing you said.
I think you see us trying to do that.
I do.
But not all of it happens here, as we know from looking at this district. Plenty of diving, though not allowed outside of those board meetings.
And I'm surprised at, at the committee meeting, there's plenty of facility updates, what are we doing, what are you doing now? What's happening? Those things, and that's part of the committee meetings. And, uh, so I just had those questions, and I'm not trying to. Pick on anybody, but I'm just concerned. Because I, I live here, and I worked here, and it, it's very, very hard, so. Those are some of the comments and questions, and you know, when I saw the fund eighty, I just thought, holy cow, Carla, you brought it up, you're right, those. It needs more numbers, it's more clarification, so. Uh, and then fund forty nine, let's say. This money name went away at one forty, or in the books that way, right?
I don't know what was.
Capital pockets, one.
Forty six.
Well, no, forty nine, is it, because we started at forty nine, is it real forty nine?
That was, that's the deposit, isn't that where you deposited, you cannot hold for many five years? Yeah, we did that.
No, one, one, one forty six.
Yeah.
One forty six, that's one thousand, or that is, is the. That was the money that you put in deposit for future building needs, you cannot, I looked at that update, you cannot touch that until twenty twenty seven. Uh. One forty nine, that you refer to, it's only used when you do. Referendum borrowing for construction. So there shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be anything in there.
Shouldn't be anything in there because there's been no referendum. Borrowing for construction. So there would be nothing in there, the. But since the capital fund would be all of fund forty six, the future. Uh, expenditure, you know. Money set aside in the future. Maintenance, uh, work that would be done. Around the twenty seven.
And I just, just for a point of reference, for those of us who don't live and read and speak. These funds, to have the name of the fund, but not the number of the fund on our paper, would help to have both, because.
Yeah, well, well, as I move forward, yeah.
Yeah.
One forty six is called a capital expansion fund, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, uh, okay, is this related to the revised? Budget specifically? Okay, because there's more coming for the, the budget, budget update, and I will make sure to.
I just wanted to piggyback off Jim. I did tell Vincent. That we, our leases had expired.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, okay, there's a motion in a second. To approve the revised, uh, budget summary and notice of change, oh, we already did it, and we voted. Sorry, I'm sorry, this, that's. Uh, okay, so. Uh, that has happened, that was approved, and I do believe there are some notice requirements now. We do have to post this, what, within fifteen days or four to five years? Someone that's aware of the posting requirements?
The posting requires a budget.
It's a retroactive, and it needs to be posted in a certain way, okay. Okay, great. Um. We're gonna, oh, budget update, we're still, okay. That's revised budget, now we're gonna move on to the rest.
Okay, just a couple of updates as we go forward, we had. Uh, membership audit. Last Thursday. Will tell you that. Volume before the auditors came in, as I was looking at it. We had some. I would say some significant errors, some, it's a pepper calling.
Can I ask a baseline question? Because we have new members, and I'd also never been sure, what is the membership?
Okay, membership audit is. Each year, the district has to. Count their, their students. Uh, on the third Friday in September, the second Friday in January, that's statute. Uh, you then, once you get done counting. Uh, you then send the number into DPI. Counting gets a little complicated because of open and open in, open and open out, who can be counted, not counted. The September count is what drives the revenue control number. In, uh, in each October, so it rolled. September count drove the October revenue control number. Uh, there was significant errors in that. Uh, so there'll be. We'll be getting some type of notice with DPI about the fact that we probably over. Over levy our, our, um, revenue control.
So what's the? What's the remedy to that? What do we have to do to fix that?
Okay, and my understanding, talking to some, some staff people here and things like that, one of the things that has to occur is. There needs to be, I've had a couple of people tell me, and I think we're involved in this at different times. There needs to be much better training. On, on how you're, how you're talking. Uh, that is, my understanding is that has not. Has not occurred. Having been involved in this, you know, many years, it's like, yeah, it, it is complicated, and you have to. There are steps that you need to. You need to take, double check, stuff like that, so someone just. Once, as we go forward, person that we're gonna be doing that anymore just needs to be. It's, it was, uh, it's dominant, it's okay, here's how we. Here's how we go, here's how we proceed. Uh, it's not. You know, people, the publicists think, okay, all you're gonna be counting students, why can't you just stand them up? Against the wall, how it's not that. DPI doesn't make you that.
But what about you? If we over levy to taxpayers? Do we have to under levy next year, or somehow adjust or send money back?
There will be probably, but will transpired, there will be some adjustments, state aid, I believe that's happened in, uh. Past, uh. Part of it will be exactly how. I haven't had this situation that often in my career, so I'm not. Totally, I have to research exactly what. What would occur. This is, well, this, the September controls the revenue control. Which ultimately does that. September and January added together. September and January added together, together and averaged this year. Will impact statey. Next year. Next year. So September and January added together, impacts state aid, September alone impacts revenue control. And that makes it, you know, complicated the way it is, January was. January was pretty, pretty close. Might have been off, might have been off one.
How often do we get September? How far, how often do we get September?
I had, I had calculated that we were off by. Close to forty. But I think when the auditors got done and looked at everything, I think it. Appears it was, it was lower, probably might have been off half.
Is there, I know that we used specifically to summer academy and had, like, even. It was free and it was open to all, so that we could utilize those numbers in our enrollment count? Is there any way that some of that is either? Contributing or not being.
Right now, right now, as of last year, it was never included. Yeah, it was never included, this, if the pupil count, it hasn't been included. No, for for eighteen. Years, in fact, the auditors, they keep, they said, you could, you know. We don't have this year, but we are gonna have it next year, they said. Good, because we kept making comments over the years of all of that.
It wasn't always free.
Well, so that's what corrective action needs to be made in order to make sure that staff have the right training.
It's just a matter of getting someone in who has some experience. Who has done counting.
So who, so isn't it, so who does that, like, who's the person who does the count conversion? And how do we ensure that they have the training they need?
Part of it, again, I think we're, we're working right now as we reorganizing, you know, assigning, it wants to be assigned. The person who will be doing it next year, rather than the. So the items are down before I leave, or otherwise you just need to bring someone in when the count is taken. And work with the individual and say, here's how to count. Sort of oversee and watch as they're, as they're tabulating everything.
There's no, like, DPI specific training?
They, they have.
I think it's important enough, they offer some specific training.
No, they have instructions, the reason I hesitate is they have instructions that is. That, that is not going to. Even a very qualified person to learn what to be is, I'm sorry. DPI instructions are not going to be, I mean, I mean, I understand that, that's my personal opinion, but I haven't looked at that, that's.
So, so at the board, the count is done in September and then it's done again in January?
Yes.
So those would be the times where we would want to check in. That should be on the radar. Making sure whoever's done it has appropriate training and there's.
My past experience, I always reported as the board.
Yeah.
Or in October and in February, but the council.
Right. We did, it hasn't been reported to us, but. I don't know if that's something. Yeah.
You can, yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so that occurred, also got a meeting at Brown and Brown. Certain health insurance, I believe, the last time you were here, we talked about the fact that. Preliminary indication was that health insurance had gone twenty percent. We factored that into the borrowing. Factored that into everything as we go forward, knowing that that probably would come down, having had some conversation, Brown and Brown went back. Thought the insurance company looked at some options, it's things we could do. You're now down to probably a little over ninety percent. Now, they came and gave us, I will tell you, they came and gave about three or four options, ways that we could reduce it. That were parallel to each other. Right now, my feeling is, this moment is that I only chose one option, the option would bring it down. The most and leave the other options on the table, because one of the things I've learned over my career. Is that you don't want to take all the options in one year for health insurance, yes, you might get a very good. Rate, but then what do you do after that? Because you've used up all your options. We have out there right now, what they're talking about from the ground is, probably if you take the one option. One option would maintain same carrier. They have been doing some contracting with. Some of the providers, they're getting some type of discounts and stuff. That the majority of our people use, there's a few that aren't, there would be some differentiation there on. Co-pays and stuff like that and simply to get us down. The other options that we have out there as you go forward, you have options now for about three or four years. That was always, firstly, that was my strategy. My career is that I always want to have at least two or three years of options. That I could use because I watched too many of my colleagues. Take all options in one year. And then they were stuck with increased whatever they were, they had no option, they had a, they had a sort of a hole. And I know that as you go forward, there may need to be. Always potential budget saving, please look at cutting some costs versus. Other costs, my attitude is be set up to give the district flexibility in future years to be able to. Deal with the health insurance issue, because that's not the way. That's always going to be an issue. So my plan is, is once we get more information, we are intending to have meetings with, uh, talk to Brown, Brown, every company, what we talked about, the staff. About what this will be, but again, the one thing is, is they will not, we are not looking at changing, we are not looking at anyone having to change their. Position. They will, they'll be able to maintain what they have and then I'll, then alternatively before. July first, I will be bringing that proposal to the board, to you. For you to approve that proposal, along with the other insurances that that we have, a couple of. Life and LTD have no increases, stuff like that, but I think always, but I still brought those forward to the people every year. And that's what I would do here is bring them, and I don't know if they've done that in the past or not, but that's what. That's how I've operated in the great notes, that you're fully aware of it again, it's something that you're offering, this is offering to employees, you should be. Aware of what that is and be able to approve that. To go forward, so those things are. Those things are going on, the other thing that I did not have on my report that I reflect, you know, is today. The resolution. Information was published in the newspaper. And it talked with the bear that means the clock started today.
On the loan.
On the loan, that's a thirty days, so today was day one of that, we have followed all other instructions, we have posted it in the normal. Normal places, every post board agenda, that was recommended, it's not required, but it's recommended, so we did all of that. So that process has, has begun. One thing that may need to, I, I did not get a chance to contact. State. May need to. You may need to accelerate. Board reorganization because we have some more paperwork. That needs to be submitted for the loan, depending upon when that has to be submitted, we need to know who the. Clerk is, because the clerk is required to sign all the paperwork. And the previous clerk is now no longer on the board.
And to be the assistant clerk.
Oh, right. Can you assist that clerk?
I will, I will have to check and see.
Then I'll go to someone else.
So, no, that, no, that's fine, I mean, it's good to know because I will check and see exactly why, why need, I mean. Yeah, yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to check and see exactly when all the paperwork needs to get in. To make sure, but that may be. That's one little bump on the road. Because of the fact that we're changing, clerk's change. And I notified them that that is occurring also to make sure that they were gonna have no issue with. That clerk was changing it. All the time that our control, they said, no. Maybe some guidelines about what I may need. But again, I just wanted to let you know that that's, that's ongoing out, so that process is beginning.
I have a question. Um, and apologies if this was perhaps just scheduled for the last meeting. Status of the audit. What is it? Status of the audit in twenty two, the most, the long time. He's, yeah, Todd, did you hear that question? I know that we had sort of received that draft audit for the purpose of. The loan, but it was very clear that it was with many, many, you know, candidates, draft, 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 and so I guess I just wondered when. We were thinking we would be able to have. Have them come, like, how, where are we at with that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that original question.
I'm just looking for an update on the audit.
Oh, um, we're, we've just got a few pieces, I think. I, I think it's down to one or two minor pieces, a bank rec, but those, I mean, that. You know, we have to go back a number of months, that may be taking a while, but I, I, I don't think there's anything significant outstanding. I sent a list of completed items to the auditor on Monday. I have not heard back yet, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, I have not heard back yet, and so I'm just waiting to hear from. From the audit partner to find out if, if we're ju- just about there, or there's something else we have to do, but. I, based on the information I've been sending in, I think we're pretty close. It's just, the, the problem again is digging through records, there's no hard copy records anywhere, and so. It, it makes it really tough to try to figure out. Why some things were, were put into the system, but I think a- as far as the numbers go. The numbers are good, it's now just trying to dig up supporting documentation that they're looking for.
Just cards of the, of those, have those been, I know that was a lot of entries.
Oh, the, the credit cards have, but yeah, actually Teresa had, had been working on those and she classified those for twenty two, twenty three. That part is done. I just, there's this, there, there's some confirmation of some receivables that we're waiting for. And then I think. We, we've got to get some OPEB demographic information and Gus may even have that already to send in, and then I think we're. We're, we're done, I can't think of anything else holding it up.
I didn't get, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, say, I mean, Todd, but yes, I got, I forwarded that over to the audit.
Okay, okay, so there's one more hurdle out of the way, and then it's just down to a couple of bank recs at this point.
So we're truly close. Truly, yeah, would it be possible to share, is the purchase card information easily, like, something you could share with the board, the data that we could see? I know that you have, yeah, I just like, so that it's something I could review with my own eyes.
Okay, what are, I guess I need to, I would tell you that, I think Teresa told me that she's gone through all the twenty. Three, twenty four, she may not have journalized and get into the Skyward system, because my question is, what? I mean, we entered into Skyward, I can see that, I can see where it is there, but I guess I, my question is, what do you actually want? Want? Monthly totals or what, what are you, what are you looking for? Because there's a number of different ways it's going to be presented. And I just want to make sure that we're giving it to you in the way that you want.
No, I, I wanted to, totals would be good and. Categories, like, I'm interested in knowing how the purchase cards were used, because they were, they've been this sort of void of information. And it's been talked about a lot, and I think a lot of people are interested in knowing how those purchase cards were used and. What expenditures are on them, right? And we, I don't think we yet know what the total usage was either, right? Total amount and a follow up question for that would be, my understanding is they were used in lieu of. Utilizing a feather process, like a software that was broken or something. Has that been, has that been fixed?
No, not yet, I have not.
Okay.
I have not had the person that I've talked to.
Okay.
We have not been able to touch base, but my, my thing is, we aren't ordering yet twenty four, twenty five. Be in place.
Okay.
Before we start ordering.
Yeah, I mean, just sort of a, a, not too satellite, but not too granularly look at how the spending happened. Yeah, find that perfect sweet spot that none of us knows until we see it, right? How much was spent on food, you know, how much was spent on classroom supplies was. Were there surprise expenditures, you know, on things that we can't explain, I, I don't know, and, you know, I think someone needs to. Eyeball it to, to know what might be of interest, it's hard for me to guess.
We haven't, we haven't seen anything that. Just went through it, you know, one of them. She also doing it, and then or anything was, that's suspicious part of it.
Right, so, but I think it's still.
But no, I, no, and I understand that, my, my only concern was I could present this. Four or five different ways, and I might present it the way that you look to go. It might tell me something, but you're gonna say this doesn't tell.
Yeah. Yeah, thank, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's a weird reason, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I just want to make sure that. That you know, that I get it to you in a question, then maybe you'll have questions about what you see. But you're not coming back and saying, can I get this a different way?
Yeah.
And I need this, you know, because I haven't, I haven't been, he says, my only concern, that's what makes you, this is what I'm wanting, I understand this, I understand. But I just want to make sure that I'm giving you the information so that we can.
I put my labor's intent to it, right, like, I. This is just me flathering now, but, you know, I, I have a lot of online purchasing locations, and so every month I get my credit card bill and I think, oh. Oh, that's where I spent all that, that's what, you know what I mean, so sometimes, I think P, P cards, credit cards tend to have that impact on us, sometimes we. Spending ways we don't understand, and so I think for all of us, as we ask ourselves. Where can we create efficiencies, where can we improve? And reduce expenditures, I think P cards would be a place where unexpected hemorrhaging might occur, and so for me, it would just help me to wrap my head.
No, no, I, I. No, I, I fully understand that, my only concern was is that I could start talking to you. As a. As a business manager, for a business manager, not a business manager, but citizen, that was, that was my, that's the only reason I raised the issue, but. I wanted it was because I want to make sure that I talk to you, rather than a business manager to a citizen.
Okay, anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience? How many people do we have on loan?
We have seven attendees.
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, you guys, thank you, thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to the pupil non discrimination report.
So. The beginning of this school year, every district of the state was told that they had to do the five. So it plays a cycle, but because you gotta want to cover the districts to do it this year, there was a lot of pushback. So that's kind of why we started with this, as a team, we all started working on it pretty heavily in the fall. And then you guys feedback and said, just kidding, we're gonna give you a little more time, now it's probably out of here. So we sort of paused, obviously there were a lot of other things going on, and then we came back to it. Some of the requirements, we have a bunch of timeline in the report, are to be the outside review, we didn't have. Like a previous report, so we reached out to our primary schools and ended up using other examples. And then just obviously using our own data and information, then there was reviewed by the cabinet, reviewed by the admin team. Then we did a share out, we did a couple of Thursday folders, and I think Taylor did a couple of standard ones as well. Take care of it with a teacher, just say, here's the report, provided some feedback. The first big feedback account that our loan numbers weren't accurate, so again, Taylor helped me out by going into Wise. Sure over updated, so that is on page five and ten, and then. She got the feedback and speaking of Carla about page five, so you can see highlighted, it's quite good. Frank yet, but we're, Taylor's in line helping support, make sure that those numbers are accurate as well. And then there were some. Um, and then there were some pieces at the end that I just put them, but we got from the caregiver. Instead, we went on to the central goal setting for that stuff. Really, um, it's a tool for the districts, the only thing we submit to BPI is just an assurance that we did this. And then we have it on file, putting it out, just to say, hey, we want to see the report, uh, but it's really for the district to use, to sign the rules, it's all the same. Um, human observation. Um, so it's the first standard through the team, so obviously, um, well, I think really, hopefully, for another five years, but, um, it gives some early information, so good reflection, it helps, um, which means that you want some survey questions, and kind of, I want to ask something, you know, you're a flex, and then the data, and so, having a fifth piece of this in this tablet, so. Um, then the next step was to obviously have the board review it, take any additional feedback, and then, yeah, the, um, have it go to the public, so that we can send that on the show.
There was an interesting. I could tell there was a ton of work here, so, thank you. Goodbye.
It was really awful, but we're up to it, all right.
What's the definition of underrepresented group?
So, it's the GCI, we stood up to their, what the definition is doing.
Oh, oh, yeah. So it doesn't include disability? I like being able to celebrate the work within. I like being able to honor all the work our community has done. It's really good, really good.
I guess my major question when I was reviewing this was, what was, what was the staff major takeaway, like what were the things that were brought forward that made you kind of reconsider perhaps what you had done, a path that had been kind of planned?
Actually, it's a lot. Sort of disappointing, um, we put it out a couple of times, really, I didn't get the teamwork. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm warming up right now, I can share the response into the actual form of the red. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine staff members, then the rest would period, there's other things, so, um, some of the, I think I noted some of the, I think I did it. PT was a good one, talking about equitable representation, it's mounted, um, higher numbers of males in special education, so that's a whole question. Criteria of innovation, good talent, which I know is something that can work that, um, student voice, fierce opportunities for student voice, so those are the three big ones that popped up, but I can share.
When you, the upward trend in the district for special education, did you analyze that with other districts? Uh, it seems to be that across districts, we're seeing an upward trend, and it's not just in the state of Wisconsin.
I mean, we didn't do that specific work, but we've seen that since holding special. We are moving on to visit teacher. I'm sorry, I didn't look up, but was there any of that, any comments or questions? Okay, teacher contract.
It is kind of refreshing. Yes, never. I'm sitting here like shaking.
All right, hello, how was everything? Hello. We only, like, um, I know Mr. Carlson was very concerned today that if you're holidaying here, that he wanted to make sure the chillers were actually full. But we appreciate having a chiller, uh, we're seeking to have us be comfortable. Um, I presented, um, the information, uh, to you around the contract for twenty twenty four, twenty five. Um, we need to ensure that our teachers have noticed that there will be issued contracts by May fifteenth, and so we are receiving approval for the contracts in, the quantity that is listed here, the board packet contains the standard contract, and then um, any of our school psychologists and, uh, professionals that have a little bit of a longer sphere on our different contract than our teachers, so those were attached separately to the documents they can provide.
And I, and all I would just say is, this is pretty kind of dry, because can't do anything, we did not, we didn't go with these people, so we, it hasn't. You have to, you have.
Tell me what to do.
I'm sorry. I don't know, you're a statue, I understand. They are trouble for good lawyers.
But we're being asked to approve this specific template, right, which then every teacher, aside, with their specific sound.
Well, the list, the.
Right, right, oh, well, okay.
That was actually a question, so one of my questions was that the format appears to be slightly different for some of our specialists. Will that format be translated across all specialists, it doesn't matter?
Um, the contract that replaced for the twenty three, twenty four school year needs to be honored as is, unless a non-renewal is presented to those staff members, and then we reissue them the new contracts. We won't be changing any of the language, the language that you see through the specialist, we will be, I saw the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that clarification, that was, I was like, I'm confused.
Yeah. And to, I'm just learning that silence, the way you're doing it. Not renew, even though you still want them to stay, because that's the only way to adjust the contract, that's right, yeah.
That's correct.
I know. Okay, okay, great. Um, any comments or questions from the audience or online? I would do it this way, thank you, but, okay, how about a motion, is there a motion?
I move to accept the presented contracts for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Second, well done. There's a motion in a second to approve the teacher contract that's presented for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Uh, all in favor, voice vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, you know? Here it goes, the motion passes, the teacher contract is our, please. Thank you, Dan.
Like the lightest light opening.
Okay, and then we are moving on to the one thousand and nine of the third second reading, actually, before we engage in discussion, maybe we should start a motion. Should we, okay, okay. I'll make a motion to approve. A motion to approve the second readings for the one thousand and nine thousand series policies. Second. Okay, so there's a motion in a second, and now I'm going to enter the discussion, if we have any questions or comments uh, from the audience, um. Do you guys have any questions or comments? I know that. No, um. There were a couple of policies I just wanted to know for like five minutes, that we could work that down the line, one was twelve thirty, add a, yeah, yeah, yeah. Curious on that one. Um, the order of charm is eleven hundred point zero one, and I was, um, curious about where charts actually current. Right, but if we're gonna do it, maybe it should not be four currents. Um, and then at nine two five zero, and I just subtract that one, I don't have the one it was, but those are just, I'm sorry, um. It was, yeah, uh, so that was.
Um, I did want to go back around to, um, I think it's eleven thirty affects conflict of interest, we had talked about, um, again, accepting the gift and raising it to the fifty, which we had already done for staff, but I didn't see the reflection in there yet.
So, for some, yeah, for some reason, I can't edit these, I think, you have, um, so I just put on the exact summary that we're going to change it, so when I, you can put it. Sorry, I don't know why I didn't. Anything else? And what I couldn't be thinking of, um, this will be in Friday's update, but we got through about three sections this week, and then we have a couple, we have a scheduled meeting on the twenty first line, but it can't, I think, but then.
It's just, well, no, I mean, I guess I just meant if our goal is to improve them and lock, and then maybe later, you know, we can come back to them, it's not urgent, I just thought those were, those were, so they noted, but, oh. Okay. Um, that's, that's.
And maybe I actually see on there, it says that we don't have to include it. It's a statement of beliefs, somebody had noted that it was before language, and so she actually doesn't like that policy.
It's from like nine hundred ninety seven, too, so it seems a little. I mean, I think it's one of the reasons we just come back to, so that we're not, we're sticking to the process, but, um, okay. All in favor, uh, of approving the second reading of the one thousand and nine thousand policies, but the changes, especially as reflected in our discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, wait. Those three ayes. Right, did you guys say aye? Oh, sorry, okay. I don't know, I mean, you could have stayed, I don't know. I didn't, I'm, I'm really like.
It's a good group, like it's.
Doing great, thank you, okay, we, we are doing great, so I think we are moving on to a review of to-do items, which I didn't see any in the executive content, but I just want to, I think, should still be on our radar, employee handbook. Right, I don't know when we're talking about coming back to that, um.
You were talking about June.
Yeah, I thought same. Oh, okay, but can we just keep it in the running, like, to-do list, so that it's like, it's on an.
That was actually my reflection, what this should do when it gets, when it gets erased on the agenda, like, when it's, when it's presented as like, blank, I'm like, well, we're in our scope.
Yeah, so, right, so I think, yeah. Um, and then, just to keep on, I, one thing that came up today for me was maybe thinking about scheduling or putting, uh, GNT or our accelerated learning, like just getting an update so, at some point, but it makes sense, but just, um, right, I don't know, that's my own personal, it's, I guess, that's nothing to do, that might be a future, sorry, um. And then, yeah, board retreat, we need to like sort of plan and schedule that, what was, possibly was that, right? Just want to put those things on our radar.
And then also getting the to-do materials planned for next week's, uh, not the to-do, sorry, the houring materials.
Correct.
In my, so that's kind of on my agenda for the coming week to work with Taylor and Dallas, and so I'll try to check in with you guys, so.
Yeah. Okay, great, anything else that I'm saying?
So I don't know.
Oh, the June Cal and Good Hope, this should still be.
Yes. Um, one of the things that I had brought forward is just kind of clarifying what.
Yikes.
I turned mine on. I think it was too many by the time.
So.
So, it's.
Okay, feeling very cautious now, uh, so what it is within our specific district, the board roles are, so there are within, I, I mean, obviously, the within legislative code, there are specific delineated responsibilities, but much of that is deferred, as it is in many, many school districts, to working staff, right? And I just think that in order to avoid things from slipping through the cracks, or being misunderstood, or having a question asked from the public and not being able to clearly respond to it.
Yeah.
It would move us to have a clear delineation of this is what the role truly is for the board, and this is what the board has respectfully deferred to staff and deeply appreciates that they do.
I think we can, I, I, our plan is to make that part of onboarding, and then, I guess, off the topic, well. Those, the two of the retreats as well, but definitely part of onboarding, and then, um, it might be some team that has a condition to our website, right, that our board, I, I've seen some good examples of, of, of like, going through meeting and agenda items, what each one really is, or what the floor, and what we do, so I think, like, we keep, we keep workshop, but definitely well adjusted to start an onboarding, that is true. Um, okay. Future agenda topic, I guess, I kind of, I, I blated about the, the, just putting, maybe I asked about like GNT, which we don't want to call GNT, right, like. So, so maybe getting on the same page for that, just about to, not any, when it makes sense. Anything else?
Do we have to put on one of those, anything?
No, 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 and so actually, honestly, uh, this is sort of there, and we can't sort of cordially, mutually, like, set agendas together, right, like, if there's something you and want us to discuss, like, talk about here, or we can talk about it offline, and we can figure out when it makes sense, I think once you see a board calendar as well, and like a budget calendar, and you see when things coming out, the pipeline, it will help us understand, or say, so, does that, did you? Oh, yeah, okay, like, yeah, please.
Um, I just wondered if it's the Good Hope contracts, you can be up to.
Yeah. Well, should, actually, can those be shared, that just the actual leases that have expired, could those be shared with the?
Yeah, but currently I scheduled for a Good Hope kind of package.
Yeah, but that's not whole, that's not whole month, that, well, okay, that's not until June.
So, yeah, the contracts are, I'm, I'm very.
I'm mostly curious what the contracts say about what happens after they're expired. Did she probably know? So.
Yes.
On the next page, please, Joe.
And is, without any, and it's, and. Okay, so it's just anything. That's layer three, that's, okay, all right, yeah, so in June, our June Cal, that we also, we've asked for, um, sort of an assessment of Good Hope, like, actual revenue, actual, you know, expenditure, hoops, and sort of understanding what we've got, to have a better idea of, understanding how to assess what it means for our district. Yeah, for the end, and so, yeah, with most.
I guess Danielle, I would, um, wonder about. Uh, I would wonder about putting on, or ensuring that the board is getting kind of that building operations update for planned things, I don't know.
Oh, 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 we're planning projects, right, Jim brought that up, and I think making sure that that does get on and gets discussed is really key. Right, so, and, uh, weekly updates, because I think, did we talk about this at the last meeting, or has it just been a weekly updates around investigating shared services for building ground? And we did talk about sort of needing to understand what the plan is in between, because we wouldn't potentially be able to engage with shared services for that until winter or spring. Yep, okay, so yes, that is a good.
And, yeah, we still have summer.
Right, so we, we need to know the metal, yeah, we need to know, yeah, that's true, that is true. Maybe, uh, June, of course, well, actually, I think, uh, uh, okay, yeah, oh my God, it is. Well, I made it, I've made it.
It's your birthday, and.
I'll give you two, are we having to, um, or is it? Yes, we are, I have to see, I have.
Seven. So I have to, I, I have something to debrief, that it's Danielle's birthday. And Danielle's had a pretty hot mess of the month, so I think for our debrief, we should sing to her.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Danielle. And happy birthday to you.
Thank you, that's probably a first, okay, all right. Um, my debrief is just welcoming our two new board members who, wow, you guys are so, man, I didn't, it's like, welcome to the, they're just ready to go, and I appreciate that prepared and already at Italian, so, um, so happy to have you guys. And, uh, yeah, and thank you to everybody for all the really awesome reports and presentations, and two, oh, two and a half hours, we could have turned it, but, you know, that's. Yeah, we did good work, so, everybody. Yes, thanks all great shit. All right, anyone else?
I would just say, you know, I. I think sometimes we sit in these meetings and we get asked really hard questions, but things are brought forward to us, they are really failing and. We also get our, I know, Mr. Beckman, I'm saying thank you to you. Legitimately, I think, you know, we sit in these seats and we're trying to do good work and we're trying, it is hard work and we appreciate, I really do appreciate. Staff and community who bring forward things that are not funded here and are indicative of our need for growth. Right? Because we can only function off of what we're told in the first place, what we know to be true at the moment, right? And so we just continue to grow and I just think this board is growth oriented and I appreciate that. While I know for some people in the public at times it feels like we're a little too light hearted. It's a, this is a heavy lift and I just appreciate that everybody seems to be trying to live together. And I appreciate the community members who are also trying to live with us. That's really excellent stuff.
And now. I'll entertain another motion.
I moved to adjourn. Set, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.